Good evening. We'll get started here at 5:45 for another work session and our council meeting will follow that at 6:30. I see we have most of our department heads. Let's start with Grace.
I don't have any.
Allison?
Yes, sir, Nathan.
Yeah.
Just what's on agenda.
Chief?
Yes, sir. I guess this is the last time you'll be sitting in front of us. So I just want to let you three know that I've really appreciated the last 15 years. Appreciate you all supporting our mission and the fire service. I know we spend a lot of money and appreciate the support we've gotten all these years. Especially, I appreciate you taking a chance on me 15 years ago, and we made a lot of progress.
It's been good.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Got one more thing. This isn't only agenda, but we are implementing a new program, Smoke Detector Replacement Program in November. And things got finalized at the last minute, so I'm going to let our Fire Marshal Ryan Tally explain it to everybody. That's all right.
A few years ago, one of our lieutenants set us up with a program through the Fire College called Get Alarmed Alabama. Statistically, in Alabama, you're twice as likely to be injured in a house fire than any other state. So this is an initiative statewide that we've been participating in for a few years. To this point, it's just been as we go out on calls and we see a need, we've been able to replace them while we're there. What we've done now, we're able to get more stock in from the Fire College's grant program. So we have a flyer that we've come up with that James is going to post online as a QR code for the public to be able to submit a request for us to come out and install a smoke detector in the home. You know, the goal is not to put a smoke detector everywhere like an alarm company would, but outside of sleeping quarters inside the homes to make sure that if there is a fire, everyone would be awake at night. We've already installed a couple of these. There's a form that the public will submit, and then that'll come to us through the Fire Marshal's office, and we'll schedule a time for everyone for us to come out and install those smoke detectors in the homes free of charge. And when we're there, there's a waiver form as long as we get that filled out and signed by the homeowner. Then the Fire Department gets these reimbursed as well so that it remains at no cost to us to continue providing this. And so that's what we'll be doing, hopefully more of after we get this advertised tonight and gets it up on Facebook for us.
How'd it go? Big deal. A lot of houses in Calera something.
Yes, sir.
Get ready. I hope everybody participates. Kevin?
I'll have it.
Roger?
Just what's on the agenda?
Reggie?
I'll have it, sir.
Reggie?
Just give your names.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. First, I would like to sincerely thank everyone who made the recent rodeo event such a fantastic success. Huge thank you to our Main Street Board and all the incredible volunteers. Your hard work and dedication, you truly brought it. You brought this event to life. And I also want to recognize our police and fire departments for ensuring a safe and smooth event, and your presence and service are always appreciated. To our Parks and Rec Department, team, thank you for your behind-the-scenes efforts to make sure that the venue was clean, organized, and welcoming for everyone. And to the individual businesses and supporters who participated and everyone that showed up, thank you. Your energy and community spirit made this rodeo one for the book. So let's carry this momentum into future events. I also want to mention the ribbon cutting at our Save More Associated Foods store this past week. This store has been a longstanding and model business in the community because of the support it provides. And we are pleased and excited with the remodeling and the rebranding. It's a part of our Main Street landscape. So we appreciate Mr. Bill Davis and Mr. Jay Sims for all they do in the city and for having this convenient grocery store on the south end town for us. And like I said, we're just appreciative for all you do for the community.
Please.
Okay, just have a few questions. Roger, there is a tree on Woodbine behind the resident there, 1215 Woodbine, that's about to fall on the power line. What is the procedure? Do we send that to you?
Yeah, 1215, I'll go look at it. As long as it's in the right of way, we'll try to figure out what we can do.
Okay, yeah. It's about if a storm comes, it'll fall on that power line.
Yeah, if not, I'll call the power company.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then just one other question for Reggie. Also, that house we mentioned that you have, that needs demolishing on Woodbine, also, what's the process for getting it demolished? Demolished? Well, because it's a special road. So will you burn it or will you just dismantle it? The neighbors are hoping that it can be burned. So can you burn it?
Chief, question out there, but I don't think you can burn anything now.
Say that again.
No, I mean, you have to take it through the process first.
Yes, but she was talking about the house at Woodbine?
Right.
This old, old house is about to fall in?
Right.
We started the process, haven't got the letter back from the people yet, but asking, could you burn it?
We don't, we used to burn houses for training fires. We don't do that. There are very, very few circumstances where we can, just because the federal regulations are so stringent on us as far as asbestos and shingles and that sort of thing. We have an excellent training facility that we use also. But I'll take a look at it. Sometimes we can go in and at least do some training. We take advantage of every opportunity we have, so we'll do that. Hey, really quick, since I'm talking, can I refer back to Ryan for one second? That's what we were texting about. We left something off real quick.
Okay.
So November 1, the burn permit, the burn ban will lift. Been working with James. We're going to have an online burn permit application process for everyone to be able to go to. Was talking within the day, finalizing that, so that should go live November 1. So that way, everybody has an easier path to obtaining a burn permit to meet the city ordinances that we have in place.
The reason why we wanted to look into burning it is because the residents say the roads are so bad, they're having to put out poison because, you know, they're coming from that bill. So they feel like if you just vandalize, they would, you know, be all over the place.
Yeah, if somebody burned it, they're going to go before it. I mean, it might get a duck load, but they're going to, at least for the smoke, they're going to be gone anyway.
All right. Well, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good.
I just want to echo what Kay said about the rodeo. It was fantastic. I think the community thoroughly enjoyed it. This could not have happened without the partnership that Calera, the city, and the employees put forth with Main Street. And I want to make sure everybody that had any part to do with the rodeo, whether you're city, community, or Main Street, understands how grateful I am for you. So thank you for your service and helping us out. That's all I have.
Kevin?
Reggie, back to the house that Kay was talking about. Have you issued any letters to that house?
Yes, sir. Haven't received anything back yet. They've got 15 days to respond, and it ain't up yet. But yeah, the letters have been sent.
I saw your house, mate.
Yeah?
Thank you. I would like to just say thank you to the mayor, Ernest, and Alan for your service. Been hearing Calera, things are so much better because of you guys. And it's been an honor to work alongside you for the past, I don't know, maybe what, almost 10, 10 years on the board of the way. It was something like that. And five serving with the onruling, city council for the past five. Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Thank you for your wisdom. Thank you for your knowledge. And a special thank you to Ernest. Ernest, it was because of you is the reason I'm up here. And all that you have taught me, all the times that you have guided me with your wisdom in building a business. And I just want to say thank you. You've been a motivator for me. You've given everything I needed. And I just want to give you your props and tell you how much I appreciate it. That's all that.
Bill?
Yeah. Well, one little concern. Last two, three weeks, I've been going back and forth down to the people park where our grandson spent the hall. And I've noticed that the speed tables down there, you can't see them. I know there's some faded yellow paint on them, but at least they're reflective in my thing. Or at least some reflectors moved down. One of the lights is out above the one closest to the school. Can't see. And we all know they're there, but all these out-of-counters don't have a clue. And those are some pretty substantial speed tables that can tear up the vehicle. I'd just like to see some attention given to them to make them more visible. I don't know if we could pound them or have his yellow or add reflectors on them or something. They don't show up enough. And it's just my concern, and I haven't had a complaint, but it's just a concern that I have that, you know, may eliminate the problem, maybe make them more visible. And as far as, I do want to thank everybody that I've worked with over the years that I'm going to save those companies. That's all.
Ernest?
Thank you, man. I just want to, Chief, Chief Henry, just to say thank you for the kind words that you shared a few minutes ago. One thing I would like to ask, I know in my, in my house, when y'all talk about the smoke alarms, I know it, I don't smoke alarms now, or like the ones you all wanted to give out today, have carbon dioxide detectors also. All of them have it now. I don't know what was modern now than what I have in my house.
My, let me verify, but my understanding with the program we're doing with the Fire College, they're just smoke detectors. There are battery-powered detectors available that are both. But this program is just a smoke detector program.
Yes. But you can, I know that they have both.
Yes, that's correct.
Again, evidently, all of them aren't like that now. That's correct.
Right. And these are not hardwired either. They're battery operated. Yes.
But I appreciate you too, Chief, for all the years you served. I've been there long enough to have had the privilege to sit with Chief Moon, with many, many things. And I was comfortable. He had a seat next to me. And I remember when you came in and followed behind. So I really appreciate your service as well. And good to be here and to see the couple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis, you want to come up and say what you're going to be saying about the Main Street? Want to come up and talk about the mayor? Not only agenda.
Yeah, we'll get Roger.
We had a great time. As you guys had all mentioned, lots of people, lots of fun, great work by the city, helping us get everything done. We were out there some late nights with Roger and the streets team and parks and everybody working. Like I said, it was a great time. We had a lot of people and a lot of fun. Thankful for everybody that came out. Dennis, he asked if Main Street wanted to add to this.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Before we get going, I want to tell you guys about some videos that are circulating around here that have been AI-generated. Team Bradshaw did, in fact, win the wild horse race. Don't check the videos, please. A great time. We had a really amazing time. I think the, mentioned the effort of the city. Quite frankly, we couldn't do it without these guys. I know Roger stepped up quite a bit. And sometimes it was 12 at night, and I saw him down there with some of his guys moving a whole lot of dirt. So thank you, Roger. You and your team did an awesome job. I wanted to mention to you guys a couple things. I don't have final numbers, but I know we sold close to $40,000 worth of tickets alone. We had visitors from multiple states. I know the county really enjoys hearing things like this, but we had people come as far from South Dakota, Arkansas, Kentucky, Texas, Tennessee, Louisiana, Mississippi. And these are just some of the contestants that came, which we had about 319. So you can imagine, you know, 50, 60, 70-foot rigs out there for a couple of nights. We had quite a few visitors. So I'm sure the people at Maco reached out to me, and they were super excited, asking if we're going to have another rodeo next week, because they were going to close for one. So they had pretty good numbers. But Main Street's really grateful. This administration and council has been extremely supportive. And those dividends are starting to pay off. Hopefully, here we'll be done with some of this construction, and we can really put it in the next year. But on behalf of my team and then the girls who are absolutely amazing and actually make this happen, thank you to the ones that are here and the ones that are at home. They'll probably listen to this. But if it wasn't for them, and Debbie as well, I know you and your family were there and setting up lights and doing different things. And we're really grateful because it made a difference. We learned quite a bit. If we decide that it's something that we want to do in the future, it's even going to be bigger and better because now we have a little bit of experience. And overall, it's just a great, great, great event. And I think our next one is Nerd Fest, is that right? Do we have anything in between now?
Truck or treat.
Truck or treat. That's right. There we go. So we're going to do that with the kiddos. We've done that, you know, for the last five or six years, and we get kids from all over the place to come and hang out with us. So we'll look forward to that, and then we'll do Nerd Fest and just compete, continue doing what we do downtown. And thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey, Dennis?
Sir?
So the grading that was done over there right now?
Yeah.
As far as, I was thinking about something on that. Is there a possibility, I kind of mentioned this to Dee earlier today, can we utilize that for like a volleyball over there, the sand?
Yes.
I mean, until we start doing whatever we need to do over there?
Yeah, I do think that there's some value there. In fact, our team was going to get together on Monday and come up with some ideas as far as what we could do, especially something low cost. It's already there. There's definitely some value there, for sure.
And also, you didn't elaborate much on about you choking the deer, the donkey out.
That was an AI video.
No, but the one I got on my phone was not AI. I videoed that one.
Now we know the source of the video.
But thank you, guys, again, for everything. I appreciate it.
Hey, I'm ready for you. Go ahead and move the next rodeo.
They're going to have to find some new donkeys.
Blake, I know that we won't say chief here, but do you want to take care of this letter of appreciation at this time?
Yes, sir.
Feel the weight.
That's up to you, but I don't mind doing it now.
I was trying to get a few things to cover.
Yes, sir.
Our list, if you want.
So first, I just want to let everybody in the community know that we, as the Police Department, we recognize that we, you know, that our community is such a great community. We have a great police force, but we also would, you know, we'd be remiss to neglect the fact that a lot of the reason that we are such a great police force is because of the community that's behind us. They do a lot of the investigative work for us a lot of times as well. So we appreciate so much of the community. We love Calera, and we strive to be the best that we can, not just in the state, because we have real high standards and goals, but we strive to be the best we can for the citizens of the city of Calera. With that being said, we have a young man here tonight that we want to recognize. And I have a citation that I want to read of an event that took place. What prompted me to do, to look into this event, was the mere fact that all of the officers that were on shift during this event this night, they all came to me and said, we need to do something for this young man. He was instrumental in what he did to help in this situation. I started looking into it, and what I'm about to read to you is pretty much the factual information that I was able to obtain pertaining to it. Okay, so, "I am writing this letter of appreciation on behalf of the Calera Police Department to express our deepest gratitude and admiration for an extraordinary act of courage and compassion during a recent car accident that was witnessed. This individual's swift and selfless intervention not only prevented a potentially dangerous situation from escalating, but also demonstrated the kind of bravery and moral integrity that inspires all of us. On the night of September 28th, 2025, this young man saw a man collide head-on with a woman's vehicle, and then he began to pursue this young lady on foot. But he did not hesitate. What he did was he got out of his own vehicle, he stepped in to stop this individual from chasing this young lady, and he put himself at risk in meantime in order to protect someone in need. Because of his actions, it may have very well rendered another serious harm, and for that, we are profoundly thankful. In a world that, you know, it moves really quickly, too fast, this young man's willingness to act in defense of another person, it reminds all of us the power of empathy. And more importantly, the importance of standing up for what's right. He has exemplified the very best of our community, and someone that chooses courage over comfort and compassion over indifference. I just want to recognize this young man, and I hope that he would please accept this letter as a small token of our appreciation for what we have deemed a heroic deed on one of our citizens. His bravery did not go unnoticed, and his example will continue to resonate with those who will hear this story. So with sincere respect and gratitude, I would like for all of us, if you would, to recognize Brett Babel." This young man up here, if you don't mind, Brett, can you help me out here? In addition to the citation, we also felt it be appropriate that we give him a framed certificate of appreciation on behalf of the Calera Police Department and our entire community. But Brett, we very much thank you for what you did, and I don't think you might have even realized that what you did that night probably saved that young lady from serious harm. So thank you very much.
Did you, Austin, do you have any information on the officer that was injured?
Which officer you referring to?
The lady, the young officer lady that was?
Oh, that was another citizen.
Okay.
So he, from my understanding and everything I looked at or saw and talked to other witnesses, just kind of the cliff notes of everything is Brett actually was almost hit by this individual. This individual was intoxicated, and he was almost hit head-on by him, swerved out of the way. This individual was intoxicated and he was almost hit head on by him, swerved out of the way, immediately acknowledged that he probably needed help. And he saw him actually kill a young lady head on. What transpired afterwards uh was that this individual in his intoxicated state hopped out of the vehicle and began to chase the young lady by trying to get her. This is where Brett actually intervened and stopped him from doing so. I guess I should say this as well, um, I don't know if Brett wants me to say this part, but his vehicle was actually stolen in the process by this individual. But Brett did not go try to retrieve, all he was worried about was this young lady that the guy was chasing. And the guy in turn stole his vehicle and led officers on another pursuit. And we were able to do so, we were able to pursue this individual, which wasn't very long before we apprehended him and took him into custody. But we were able to do this because Brett pretty much had the scene at the wreck security. So that's why it was extremely, I guess, uh, you know, important for what he did and him just, his selfless act is what led to us being able to have guys do the job they were to apprehend the guy.
James, can you introduce our new employee? I know you're only a judge, but some board here?
Um, as y'all know, uh Stephen that used to work here has retired and so we uh took applications to fill his position. And Connor Elliott is taking Stephen's place here. Um, so Connor uh is a graduate of UAB in computer science and also worked in the hospital's IT department here for what about a year and a half? And then also did some work um with United Way as well, doing some computer services for them as well. So he comes here with a good bit of experience and knowledge and uh this is uh his second full week here. So uh he's already got his feet wet and got started and so, um, you know, some of those forms that uh Ryan Tally was talking about earlier is some of the ones that Connor's actually done. So he's already getting in here and doing a great job for us, so. But I just wanna make sure they all know him so y'all, if y'all get an email from a guy named Connor, you're not like, who is this person? So uh he he's legit, so.
I'm real, I'm on IT team. Send us an email, itsupport@calera.org. Um, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Did you want me to go ahead and talk about the other thing I got?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so I sent each one of you uh in the packet. It's what's called a TAP program. It's a technology assessment planning program. But this is basically a national accreditation for our RIT department. Um, some of the benefits of this is by us actually being able to use this planning program. Um, we were able to uh strengthen everything that we have here, anything from cybersecurity to policies to equipment. And it helps us look really good when we go to get grants. Um, and you know, I had mentioned a couple of months ago that we were attempting to get the grant from the state. We did get that grant. Um, so I got confirmation from them and that grant is gonna total anywhere between about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and that goes straight towards cybersecurity for our city. So what that's gonna be used for, um, there's a, what they call multi-factor um program, it's called Duo, that will make it to where, um, you know, there'll be a, users will have to enter password plus either have a token or their city issued cell phone, they have to actually select and and put a number in. So that'll verify that if in the event that none of our city employees would ever do this, they put a password up under their keyboard and somebody was given their office to get in their computer, they wouldn't, they would not be able to get in because they would not have that second level of of authentication. And the other part of that is going to be, we have some networking switches that need to be replaced. Uh, they have like a five-year, you know, shelf life, I guess you could say, is how long they're supposed to be replaced. So we'll be replacing near about all of our old networking switches, so that'll bring us up, you know, where we have the most modern equipment. So that also becomes in that grant. And again, that grant is a one hundred percent paid for by the state, so we have no match. Um, and they actually buy the equipment for us. So we were able to choose the equipment that we wanted, they purchased it, so it doesn't even have to go through finance. So they pay for everything in addition to this. Um, so it's, it's a really great program and um it's administered through the Alamo Office of Information Technology, but the people that are actually dispersing it is Auburn University. So the people that are doing it are people that do IT work for a living, so they know, you know, what the needs are and that kind of stuff. And again, this is something that we can apply for every year and pretty much get it. Um, so it's just money out there for cities, it's only for local government to be able to use. So it's something that we're definitely going to uh to continue with. And I do wanna give um some credit to Kara, cause Kara's the one that actually sent me the information for this grant to begin with. So I do wanna give her some credit for that, so you know, that's another, another thing that she's done well for our cities, so. But basically this program um will give us the ability to kind of go through where our current processes are, be able to document, have we started it, are we halfway through, three quarters of the way through? And in that way, you know, if you guys want, each quarter, I can kind of show you, this is where we were last quarter, this is where we are and making things better, so that way y'all can kind of keep up with exactly what what we're doing. Cause if we don't tell you what we're doing, you may not know, cause y'all got so much other stuff going on, so. That's kind of my goal, is you all can kind of keep up with what's going on as far as we're concerned, so. Do you have a question or anything?
Yes, James, does that grant, if anyone in the state can get that grant, I mean, is it just for, is more than one? Say in Chevy County, just we don't necessarily got that grant?
So they don't tell me who else got the grant, um, but basically the state allows a certain amount of money per year for local government entities to use. And essentially what we did is we went to them, uh, the the Auburn folks and basically said, okay, here's what we have, here's what we need. Now, they won't pay for any cybersecurity stuff that we already have. So like if it was something that we pay like a yearly fee for or something like that, they won't cover that. But if it's an additional cybersecurity, something that we need or to upgrade some equipment so we have better protection, that's what that covers. So basically we apply each year for what we need, they go through there and decide uh that they have a board that will set everything and decides what they're willing to give us. So I don't know what other cities got, cause they don't disclose that to us. Um, but from what I understand, they said this is definitely a reoccurring availability for us to be able to put in for each year.
Good stuff. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Karen, can I mention more about the trunk or treat since we have time? I just kind of alluded to it, so I wanna make sure I give everybody all the details for trunk or treat. Like you said, this is an annual event, we do it every year. We partner with Collectiveish Churches, our sponsor, but anyone can participate in a church group, community group or individual. You can sign up and bring a trunk, and again, that's a Thursday before Halloween. And it's a great community event, there's activities there, there's food there, we always have games. Um, it's a lot of fun. Um, if you sign up a trunk, you decorate it, kids come around, we get kids from all over that come. Several thousand people come to this event, so it's a great event for our community and is a full community um get together and gathering. This year we're doing again the sensory hour, so um anyone with special sensory needs can meet at Collectiveish Church at five o'clock and they get a preview into the event. Where sometimes trick or treating or trunk or treating or participating, those type of events can be difficult for them for large crowds. So it'll be just that hour for those that need the sensory and need a little more space and light to go through. And then we start at six o'clock. Okay, you can find out more details on our website, as always, downtowncalera.org. Again, it's a lot of fun, um, dressing costumes, you can come out, um, just having fun. Bring your kids, grandkids, everyone.
Thank you, Dee.
Thanks.
Good mayor, that, I mean, there's another community event that's going down this, this Sunday, I believe, at the church, I know our pastor here, Pastor Mike, is on the bench for the, for the, for the children of Calera, people of Calera. Uh, he can express that if he's just here, if he wanted to.
Come on, come forward.
Hey, good evenings, everybody. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council. Uh, yeah, every, every year we have uh what we call a Hallelujah Harvest Festival. It's really just a, a time to be able to uh pour into our kids, our local kids here in the city. And uh there's no cost, there will be tons of food, games, activities, and just a good fellowship. So if you have any kids, send them our way, we'd love to have them from four to six, four to six this coming Sunday. But definitely, uh, again, uh, thank you for the opportunity and again, thank you all for what you do for our city.
Thank you.
Pastor Mike, I uh mentioned at our last council meeting, I said that New Mount Moriah fed the football team and the homecoming that they won. And it seemed like, I think, last year, uh, and then you guys fed them and they won that time. So some people saying that we think New Mount Moriah needs to feed them every game.
The bid was twenty-four thousand dollars more than what we have set aside for that. So when you guys approve, if you approve the resolution, that would be approving a budget adjustment of twenty-four thousand dollars. Actually, the exact amount is twenty-four thousand, five seventy-five. So in last year's budget, we had set the money aside, but two hundred and fifty thousand had been set aside and thirteen hundred had been spent on fees related to that, so that has a short twenty-four thousand, five seventy-five.
Hey, Karen. Um, when you did the plan of the zone, I think you mentioned about the hotels, homes, too, so.
Yes.
Is, isn't they open?
Uh, I think it should be. Yeah, I, I, I'd heard that they wasn't, you know, they're supposed to open a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
If everything, I know my part was good and uh Ryan's stuff was good, I think Bill and Kevin's stuff was good. And you know, as far as if they opened up, if they didn't, it'd be there, something to do with them. But yeah, it was, everybody's good with them.
Bill had something with the landscape.
Yeah, I think it was.
But I think they addressed it.
Yeah. They should be open.
On the other one, by Chick-fil-A?
Uh, they're working on it.
How, how soon do you think?
I'm saying, they said it one time, uh, I think they're still holding to it by the first year, but I think it's gonna be before then. Um, cause they had a couple of changes and superintendents and they're starting to move a little bit later now. No, but they haven't given you a complete date yet.
Are you?
Chief Kendrick, how's the new fire station? How's the new fire station?
We're moved in, uh, we still, we've got a few things, we're still working with the uh, the contractor to finish up, but we, we're um, we're in good shape over there and as soon as we can, we'll do an open house and I know, open it up for the community. So everybody all over the place is asking about that, so we'll get that done just as quick as we can. It's a great location, it's a lot more space and we're filling it up fast.
What about RPS, have they moved in?
No, so they originally, um, their facilities manager was gonna start working October tenth, but they had a, they had another project, probably in Walker County, that took a little bit longer. So I anticipate sometime in the next week to two weeks that they'll get down here and get started. And um, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna wait until they're ready to start work and then we're gonna make the lease effective on that date before they start working. Yes, ma'am.
Pastor Mike, would you mind opening us up in a word of prayer and we pray to believe this? Show us faith.
And we pray, dear Lord God, we just thank you for this opportunity to call upon your holy name. We thank you, God, for your goodness and for your grace. And thank you, God, for the purpose that we gathered for this city council meeting. We thank you for the leadership in our city. Thank you, God, for their service, for their sacrifice. Thank you, God, for their wisdom and for their leadership. And we just pray that you will continue to lead them and guide them, Lord God, with wisdom, knowledge and understanding, God. In our current climate, Lord, and the conditions and the things that are vastly changing, God, it was good to know, God, that you were keeping the city. And we thank you for the citizens and we thank you, God, for what you're doing here in the city of Calera. Please continue to give us grace and, Lord, continue to meet every need. Now bless this meeting, let everything be done, God, according to your will, and Jesus, and we pray, amen.
Amen.
Tension, salute, pledge.
By the allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God and indivisible, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much. All right, on my agenda, the first item I have is to approve the agenda as outlined.
A second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as outlined, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now need a motion to approve and dispense the minutes from our October meeting, October sixth.
A second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've already knocked out a few of these things, so we've heard from James. We've already knocked out a few of these things, so we've heard from James with our technology assessment planning program. There was no action to take on that, was it, James?
No, sir.
Okay. And we met our new employee in the I T, so a little turnover, a little bit of a Kenny at this time.
Governor Ivey, State of Alabama, have presented this certificate of recognition to Connie B. Peyton. This certificate was 27 years of service to the city of Cleara, effective October 20th, '25, on behalf of the State of Alabama. Congratulations and the best wishes on your retirement, Connie Peyton. From the Governor, Kenny Ivey, the State of Alabama, has presented this certificate of appreciation to Ernie Montgomery. This certificate is presented to Ernie Montgomery for outstanding service as a city councilman for the city of Cleara through your attention. You have carried out your responsibilities with exceptional experience, unwearied professional and deep commitment to the community. Thank you for your service of the citizens of the great state. Ernie has been with this city a total of 21 years, so let's give him a hand. Governor Ivey, State of Alabama, has presented this certificate of recognition to Mayor John Gray. This certificate is presented in recognition of your retirement for 16 marital services to the city of Cleara. Your dedication and commitment have left a vast impact on our community, and your contributions will be remembered with gratitude. On behalf of the State of Alabama, congratulations and best wishes of your retirement, John Gray. Governor Ivey, State of Alabama, has presented this certificate of appreciation to Mr. Allen Watts. This certificate is presented to Mr. Allen Watts for outstanding service as a councilman of the Cleara community. Throughout your tenure, you have carried out your responsibilities with exceptional experience, unwearied professionalism, and a deep commitment to the community. Thank you for your citizens, thank you for your citizens of the great state of Alabama. 13 years as a councilman.
Mayor Ford, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank everybody for their support over the years. Thank you, John, for being there for me. And thank Curtis, he's been there a lot for me. And sorry to get emotional, but this is no lie to me. Thank you.
Thank you, brother. Well, I too, I can thank everyone for their support, and all the ones that support him his 21 years with their vote of confidence. But I definitely try to serve this city in reference to the city with honesty, integrity, and transparency. I give thanks to God for allowing me this opportunity to have served the city at this period of time. We know we have a very good mayor and council that will continue to take our city forward. This is home for us, and we'll be here to help out in whatever ways we can. I'd also like to thank my, some of my family who are here, for their unwavering support. Of course, our pastor's here, I thank him as well for his courage to give me over the years to stay focused and do the right thing. And definitely want to thank all our department heads for, each time I call upon them over the years, for the problem, for the situation problem we had in the city, that someone called upon me for, I reach out to them, and they always came through for me. So I really appreciate you guys for partnering with me. And then definitely, I know we already represented Connie, but Connie, over the years, I remember when Connie first came, we're here right after Linda. I know most of you who've been here long enough know who Linda was and what she did, but Connie came right after Linda, she's done an excellent job, not just for me, for all of this council. We called upon, we got in trouble, I had issues, we called upon Connie, she was solving the problem for us. Many times, we got out of state, or out of, in hospital, or down in Mobile or something, we would call, I would call Connie, say, I got a problem here, and she, even after hours, she'd get on the computer and get it taken care of. So I really appreciate Connie for her 27 years of service as well here in the city of Cleara, and thank you.
I don't have a prepared speech, but I do have a lot of things I want to say that all kind of come flashing here near the end of my time, so I want to thank you, thank the cities, thank the citizens, thank the employees. I have made some nice relationships with a lot of our employees. I look back and I think of, I think of Tommy Moon. I was new in office and dealt with one of the hardest things we could do at that time. So in Tommy's absence, we were able to get Chief Hendrick. And Chief has been right beside us for all these years, he's been here 15, 16 years. I'm claiming I've been here 17 years. I had one year of served dual purpose. George Roy and I served a year together. Somehow, I'm just supposed to do that, but it was a good transition. And believe me when I say this, change is good. Change can be dealt with, and it can be good. I am here to support this man as much as he will absolutely let me or needs me to. I am here for Cleara. I am here, I'm a resident, most of my life I'm here, I've raised my family here, so I plan to be around, I plan to be involved, only that, your wish, or anybody that needs me. I don't plan to be meddling in anybody else's business, but I'm here with the wealth of knowledge that we can, together, move this thing forward. I think we've come a long way, and I want to thank my wife, Shannon, my mother, my mother-in-law and father-in-law are here, Jean and Abby Wallace. I have tremendous support from my family, and I plan to spend a lot more time doing nanny duties. I've got three boys that I'm going to kind of make up time. Shannon's uncle called me the day after I was unsuccessful in the election, he said, welcome to your first day out in such a thing here. So I have, I have some plans to spend time and do some things, take care of my health, and focus on some other things. I want to, again, say that I am here, and I appreciate all this serving council, anybody that served before, we've got a couple of them that are not with us now, that have served over my term. Congratulations on the new guys. We have Henry, I see Drew in here, so you're going to have, you're going to have opportunities that will really help this city, just get involved and work as a team. I think that we have done and been a good example of that over the time that I've been here. Thank you for the time, thank you for the support, and I won't, I won't be emotional. It's not, it's not easy, but I love Cleara, I love you guys. Brother Mike, you've been a rock for me. You've come forth and helped in this city many times in many different ways. Thank you for your dedication to New Mount Ryot Church, and I hope that the city has that relationship going forward. I trust that we will continue that.
Here, I want to say one thing. Being a leader in this city means a lot to the community, for these fellows that's stepping down, but they're not, they're not going far. They just step away here, just a little time, to just enjoy theirselves. We need those guys as leaders. We need every one of you to be leaders, to take this city in a different direction. No one person can ever do this by themselves. It's been a pleasure for me to be on this council with Ernie, Allen, and the mayor, and all of these other council representatives. I've learned a lot in the last five years with dealing with the city and moving us in a little different directions. Now, we can't do it all in one night, so everybody just relax, enjoy your times that you have. That little dash on the grad marker is your time, so you need to enjoy your time. You know, we have the first one, we got the dash, and then the end. But the end's a new beginning, so we have a new beginning. And I will be thankful to know that these fellows is here to help the city of Cleara. So I just want to say thank to them highly enough.
Next on the agenda, we have Resolution 2025-55. It's a resolution of support for the city of Tuscaloosa. Is there any comments or questions on that?
I'm remembering, Mayor, this is what we counted in to, along with Tuscaloosa, with the taxes, right? So we just gave this on a kind of contract.
Just expresses support.
Oh, yes, support, okay, good. Okay. Resolution supporting that. Then I will make a motion, and we accept Resolution 2025-55.
My second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-56 is a traffic signal bid award for Highway 70 and Highway 42. Get that in the bid package. We have, I think Stone and Sons was a little theater.
Yeah, I think it's Stone Electric? Yeah, I think it's their Stone Electric, yeah, branch of, but yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid. My second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-57 is approving the execution of a contract with payments, foot and finance, so agreement to purchase a new garbage truck.
I move on the motion, accept.
My second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have on my agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.